I'd like to call the January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, City of Gardner Planning Commission's order. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Let the nations divide, but in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call, starting on my right.
Commissioner Berg, present.
Commissioner Combs, present.
Commissioner Stilz here.
Commissioner Juneman here.
Commissioner Mater here.
Commissioner Von der Schmidt here.
The quorum is present. Move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. And we just have the standing approval of the minutes from December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. Anybody from the commission like to? Anybody from the floor? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mater with a second by Commissioner Von der Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to the regular agenda, we have item number one, Intermodal Industrial Park. Item number twenty four dash three oh four dash oh seven, rezoning preliminary development plan, preliminary plat. This is a public hearing item. And item number twenty four dash three oh four dash ten, final development plan and final plat, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of one hundred and seventy fifth street and Claire Road. Staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Happy day after Sunday football. Again, item number one is the twenty four dash three oh four dash zero seven and twenty four dash three oh four dash one zero. We thought we'd go ahead and put these two both together, but they will be two separate motions at the end. First, oh seven is for zoning, the preliminary development plan, the preliminary plat. And then, of course, the second is for the final development plan and final plat. As you can see from your screens, the Intermodal Industrial Park consists of approximately one hundred and eighty six acres and is located at the northeast intersection of one hundred and seventy fifth street and Claire Road. East of the park is located within the city of Alatha and is zoned M two, actually, I'll tell you what, let me just go to the next screen here. East of the park is located within the city of Alatha, it is zoned M two, general industrial. And the red portion that fronts on to one hundred and seventy fifth street is zone BP, which is planned business park. South is R U R, county rural. And CP three, city of Gardner planned commercial district, which was the Claire Crossing development that came in last year. East is, is a property in red, almost kind of triangular shape. It's Z P two, which is the city of Gardner planned, general business. However, that, that plan expired a long time ago, so. As mentioned before, this site contains approximately one hundred and eighty six acres. Total square footage planned for this development is around two point eight million square feet. Total planned open space is fifty five point seven acres, or around thirty percent of the total site. The preliminary plat will consist of eight lots and seven tracks. Those seven tracks are generally for the private street located within the development and the tracks mainly, again, open space and also for retention. All utilities are available to this site. The final development plan, which is lot one of the development, which is located at the very southeast portion of the preliminary. So the final development plan again is lot one. And the proposed development is a four hundred and sixty eight thousand square foot building. And the final plat will consist of one lot and three tracks. As you can see, it kind of goes up with the tracks to the north. That's really for the offsite retention that will be needed for this development of lot one. Lot one is approximately twenty five acres. And again, the tracks are for stormwater retention and for private drive. The subject property was deannexed from the city of Alatha in October of two thousand and twenty four and then subsequently annexed by the city of Gardner later on in December of the same year. Prior to the annexation, the city of Alatha was preparing to hear an application for industrial development on the site. The plan before you tonight is roughly the same that was submitted to the city of Alatha. At the present, the property is undeveloped. Staff findings that we found that both the preliminary and final development plans are in substantial compliance with the land development code. Site is capable of accommodating the building use and access and will not negatively impact right of way or adjacent properties. The project is generally consistent with good planning and design. The proposed use is compatible with a lot of the surrounding properties and what is being developed, especially to the north and to the east. They did request two deviations. Two deviations being requested are basically in the same, under the same code. One is for massing and the other one is for transparency. The massing standard is for all street facing facades shall break down components of the main mass with a single wall planes longer than a hundred feet by using at least one of the following. The wall planes were this, this building is almost half a million square feet. And for them to break that down into smaller lengths would have been almost impossible for them to do. But, you know, the, the bearing roof line and the required spacing is, is not met, but based on large scale of this building and the tilt up wall construction type, this requirement is not necessary. Staff believes that enhanced facade material colors changes along with building setbacks from the public realm provide for adequate appearance for a warehouse. Staff is supportive of the variance dealing with massing. Transparency, the standard is fifteen percent at all street facing facades. While they don't meet that, they're, they're at five percent. But we measure our transparency rates two feet to eight feet. And we all know that these warehouse buildings are upwards of right around thirty, thirty feet in height. If we were to take all the glass and transparency that this, that this proposed building has, it'd be at a total of nineteen percent. So it's well above the standard, but it does not meet our guidelines in the, in the land development code. The applicant has had, has enhanced the landscaping along Claire Road and one hundred and seventy fifth frontage, which also helps block the view of the bay doors. The staff is also in support of this deviation request. Staff recommends approval of the applications twenty four, three oh four dash oh seven and twenty four, three oh four dash one zero, a rezoning preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, final development plan and final plat with conditions listed in the recommended motions.
Put the rest up. Thank you, Bob. If the, if the applicant is here tonight and would like to make a presentation, please come forward, state your name and address for, for the public record.
Hello, my name is Darren Aldag. I'm a development manager for Paints and Tony Development.
My name's Judd Clausen. I'm with Phelps Engineering, Civil Engineers and Land Servicers for the project. With us tonight is also my business partner, Dan Finn, serves as a project civil engineer and record and the project manager, so. Okay, great, you got the screen up and.
So I work for Paints and Tony Development. We're a worldwide developer. We have sixteen offices in the United States. Our corporate office is in Southern California. We also have three offices in Canada and I believe there's nine in Europe. So we do, and this is ninety five percent of what we do is industrial all over the country. We do it for a lot of big clients that, that have us build these buildings all over the place. We're owned by one person. His name's Carl Paints and Tony. He lives in Florida. He's quasi-retired. He's somewhat retired. His son is taking over the business and he is running. His name's Aiden. And we, yeah, and then there's, there's all of our offices. The St. Louis office is where I'm from and we do, we cover kind of from, I would say, Ohio to Kansas City and then probably the southern border of Missouri up to, almost up to Canada, taking Chicago out of it. So we cover a pretty good part of the country, so.
Great. Thanks, Darren. Just kind of some follow up from Bob's presentation. Try to skip over anything, so it's not a repeat, but it's basically is presented here about two point eight million square feet of new industrial type buildings. Kind of the smallest one is about a hundred thousand square feet. Larger, the largest one's about five hundred thousand square feet, so kind of a mix of different building sizes for the different types of tenants that we see in the market. Some of these buildings may be split tenancies as well, so it may not all go to one. It just, we don't really know yet, but that's kind of what we see in the market on this. There's eight buildings planned for the site and as Bob mentioned, there's one hundred and eighty six total acres here. Bounded by Claire Road on the west and Interstate I thirty five on the north. And then one seventy fifth on the south and really kind of that half mile line with Alatha there on the eastern side. And then it jogs up around the new Coca-Cola plant there and ties back into one hundred and sixty seventh street up at the top of the page there. So that's the overall boundaries of the overall park. And this map shows the planned phases of each of the buildings in the park. And I'll just kind of walk you through that a little bit. The first building is in the lower left southwest corner, phase one there, building number one, lot one. And that's the final development plan before you tonight is for that building. And then we'll be coming back to the city for approvals on the subsequent building. But our plan is, is come in off of one hundred and seventy fifth street. There'll be a new private road going north on the east side of lot one there that lines up with the, with the road that was approved with the plan for Claire Crossing to the south. And it's just right to the west of the power line easements that run all the way up and down through there. And we've been coordinating with Evergy on those approvals. And we have preliminary approval from them for the plan here. We still have to work out final details for transformer locations and things like that for the plans yet. But all's looking great on that standpoint. And then we'll continue to build road A to the north. The next building will be in that northwest corner shown as phase two there. And then we'll flip over to the east side and build the two buildings up the east side there and then continue our way to the north and come out the north and up there by phase five with the project. This plan also shows various road improvements all around the project that have to be built at different stages. There was a very in-depth traffic study that was done and coordinated with the city for turn lanes and signals and all those things come online at different points when the traffic starts to warrant the necessity for those. But at least with the first phase, there's turn lane improvements there where the new drive comes into one hundred and seventy fifth. There's turn lanes along Claire Road there. And, and then as more buildings come online and traffic becomes heavier, then there's the need for signals to come in and, and those types of things, and there'll be updated traffic studies at each stage to, to document kind of how things are planned, so. I'm going to continue on here. Preliminary plat kind of shows, you know, where the various new lots and tracks are. You see the power line easement running up along the east side of the, the track H road that's in there. And then there's a Southern Star Gas Pipeline that runs kind of at a, in an angle parallel with I thirty five. And you can see it there on the south side of lot five and seven. And that's a utility we've also coordinated with as far as encroachments. There's overall landscape plan for the plan for the park with the, not only internal plans, but also plantings all along the internal roads, along one hundred and seventy fifth street. You see there on the south side, lots one and two, the plantings there along the street and on the, on the west side of lot one and the northwest building there along the east side of Claire Road, the road plantings and stuff all along there for screening and buffering. And there's a lot more detailed plans, but that's just kind of the overview. This is the detailed plan for the first building, phase one. So with this project here, this will be, we will build, you know, the section of the private drive going north off of one hundred and seventy fifth there that's shown on the east side of the building. It'll terminate for today in a temporary turnaround and then it eventually continues to the north. As, as more buildings come online, we'll continue that road further to the north. It has parking for employees and visitors on the west and east sides of the site of the building. And then truck docks and trailer parks on the north and south sides of the building. And you can see that overhead power pole and Evergy power line easement on the east side there, kind of for, for reference. Claire Road's on the left side, the west side there, and one seventy fifth on the south. This is the final plat for, for this first building. We'll obviously be rededicating right of way through there and then plating the lot and plating the, we'll actually plat the track for the entire length of the ring road up and around, just not build all of it at this point in time. we'll actually plat the track for the entire length of the ring road up and around, just not build all of it at this point in time. Um, we'll also include a stormwater detention parcel at the very northern end of the site. It's sort of at the top of the page. It's that triangle that you see up there. That's a stormwater detention basin that will be built up front. And then as new buildings come online, it's already sized for those other buildings that go into that particular basin. So getting that work done early, uh, and upfront, so that kind of saves on future grading down the road and such. Uh, there's a, s- um, a landscape plan for, uh, lot one. This matches the preliminary plan. There was a, a, a new sheet on your chairs, I believe, um, tonight when you came in. This replaces the landscape plan that was in your packet. That was included by air. It does, did not, the old one did not match the preliminary plan. This one does. So this is a more detailed landscape plan, calls out all the species and stuff, and it complies with the preliminary plan. That was part of the packet, so. We wanted to make sure that you had the right landscape plan as you were reviewing this tonight. As you can see, not too, uh, exciting, but this is the floor plan for the, the warehouse. Potential for offices typically in the corners, uh, of these types of buildings. And depending on the tenant needs, you know, those offices could expand further and such. But typically, the offices are on the corner elements of the building, and then the warehouse space is on the, obviously, the, the mass of the building in the center. We're also very detailed elevations that were provided, uh, that Bob also spoke to with, with, uh, the plan and talked about the deviations. Uh, we worked through, you know, the, uh, those architectural comments and, and, uh, concerns with, with staff, and arrived at what we feel is a good compromise on the, on the building design that's very aesthetically pleasing, uses good materials and colors. And with that, um, I'll just kind of close with anticipated schedule, because we always get asked about scheduled timelines and stuff. Obviously, we're here tonight for our first entitlement approval with, uh, what you've seen. Uh, we would then go to the February meeting for city council, and, um, while that, right after that, we'll be, um, going to the airport commission and then the boardy, Board of County Commissioners. Uh, since this project lies within one mile of New Century, we have to get that approval. While that's going on, we'll be feverishly working on doing, um, plans, permit plans, and coordinating with staff the final design details and going through permitting process. Um, we'll obviously be pulling land disturbance permit first, so we can start moving dirt, kind of when the weather breaks here for the spring. Uh, putting in sewers and the utilities and, and masquerading of the site, and then following that with building construction. We'd anticipate, uh, um, starting construction sometime in April or second quarter, um, of this year. And then, uh, we'd like to have the building done by the end of, uh, the fourth quarter. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll see, uh, how that goes, so. That's kind of the overview, big picture-wise, and Darren and I are available for any questions, and, uh, we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you. I think we'll probably hold off on questions for now. We'll open up the public hearing.
Perfect. Okay.
And then, then we'll go through questions. They might have you guys come back up. Thank you. All right. Uh, since this is a public hearing item, we'll now open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this item, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Individuals, I believe, are allotted, uh, three minutes, and then individuals representing a group, um, seven minutes.
Can I ask a point of clarification? So that, that, just for my clarity and those that might be watching. Um, this, this is a, a, a rezone preliminary plan and the preliminary plat all together in the public hearing?
Correct.
And, and the rezone is because the land came over as what Olathe had annexed it in to? That's what I'm just, I'm trying to understand the process.
Yeah, because it can be, it can be a little confusing. Yeah, so the, the rezoning is actually triggered because at the time of de-annexation from Olathe, that Olathe zoning is, is lost.
It's lost, right, so it reverts back to.
So it reverts back to a county zoning district.
Okay.
And therefore, by coming into the city, it retains that county zoning until a development proposal comes in requesting a rezoning.
Okay.
To our, to our standards.
Thank you.
Because otherwise, it's in the county. I believe Bob said the R U R.
The R U R, okay. Just wanted to confirm. Because it wasn't updated in Ames for me to check.
Yeah, it's, Ames does not really help us when it's this kind of.
Yeah, it was a new annexation, and the, the records hadn't caught up yet, so.
Yeah, because they, a lot of times, they're getting the records from the various cities or the county, and
Yeah.
as they come in, that's when they get it triggered.
Yeah, I was really lost in, in the minutia, so I just wanted to make sure, because this is a little something different than what we've seen. So I just, in case others might have had the question on what we were having the public hearing for.
Correct. So it, it is on the rezone from the county R U R to this district that's being proposed with the preliminary development plan.
And plat, so those comments would be entertained as part of the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll entertain that. And, and even if there's comments on any of the package, you know, including the final, that's why we kind of package the presentations together, because sometimes there may be something that comes up that affects both the documents.
Good, good point. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. Appreciate the clarification.
Seeing as no one is approaching the microphone, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Major to close the public hearing, with a second by Commissioner Sosa. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? All right, motion carries six to zero. Close the public hearing. Um, all right, uh, Commissioner, discussion. We'll start, uh, on my right, Commissioner Berg.
I have a couple of questions, um, and I'm not sure if it's for staff or not. I saw on the overall site plan, it has a notation says alignment by others. What does that mean?
I have to see which, where on the plan we're talking about, just to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing.
It looks like the street.
Is it a hundred sixty-seventh and?
No, South Edge, South Edge Lane.
Okay.
It says future head, hedge lane alignment by others.
You're talking about on the far east side of the, of the document, I think Judd wants to.
I, I can speak to that.
Okay.
So, um, the city of Olathe over there is realigning a hedge lane and a hundred sixty-seventh at that location. Uh, we showed it graphically for reference to, so, you know, people looking at the picture know what's gonna happen there. But, uh, we're not designing that, and what this, that's not part of this project, so that's why the reference to others is, was noted.
Okay, thank you. I noticed on the landscaping plan, it says F F E.
Uh, that stands for finished floor elevation, I believe.
Okay.
It, it's probably a carryover note from the, from the grading plan, that the landscape architect likes to use, uh, the contours from the grading plan as he's laying out the planting plan, so he knows if he's planting a flat area or slope. So those types of labels come over from the grading plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Those, that's all questions I have.
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm gonna ask the obvious. Why are you here and not in Olathe? Can we gain a bit of understanding as to how we got so lucky to have this conversation?
Not really.
Okay, that's not part of what you all are deciding. So the question, it's, it's annexed.
Yes.
So it's here now, uh, questions within our, our city code and our.
And, and then I'll, I'll also just add to that, just for clarification on those things. Those are likely conversations between the client and the city of Olathe. They're not necessary for our public hearing purposes. It's that both those parties agreed to that situation, so. Um, I can't even say that we necessarily know that much about it, as staff.
I thought you might say that. I understand. So maybe, I'll try to ask, are we open to the city's policy guidelines on IRVs? In this discussion?
Yeah, also not per the city, so anything that comes into the DAC element, IRVs are funding, all that is the city council decision depending, so.
Okay.
You guys are just looking at kind of the land use element of it as a tip of the setting.
Yeah.
Regardless of, you know, where the funding for the buildings are coming from. If at all, the buildings could never get built hypothetically, you can still approve the rezoning, so.
What about occupancy of the future buildings? Could you, are?
Tenants.
Tenants, of course. Uh, are there any tenants identified? Are we open to have those?
I'm just moving on, so. I, I can, I can make the comment that the, the tenants will have to be consistent with the plan that's being put in front of you and approved. So any tenants on this would be in, would have to be in line with that zoning category that is being asked for. Usually, um, I, I think it's fair to say this first building, even though it's the final plan, I'll mention of this, is a speculative building, I believe, by the, by that applicant. So I don't think anybody's been identified at this point in time for those. That may happen as future phases come along, though, right? So as each building comes along, it may not be a spec building. It may be a custom build. So that's the options I believe that the applicant has available to him. I'll let you.
That's fair. I wasn't sure if you already had it.
I'll maybe add a little color to that as well. No, there are no, uh, tenants identified at this point in time. Typically, RFPs from prospective tenants come out, um, um, and provide that, you know, the building, you know, must, needs to be occupied, say, like in six months or something like that. So typically, developers have to build things, uh, speculatively, so that they can meet the RFP requirements for the tenant to be able to land them. I will tell you, though, that this building has, uh, you know, typical, uh, design to it that would appeal to, uh, the vast majority of tenants that would want this type of space as far as, you know, clear height in the building, uh, dock spacing, trailer storage, you know, parking for customers, parking for, you know, those types of things have been factored in to make it widely popular among the RFPs that, uh, Panatani would expect to receive, to be able to compete, uh, in that market and bring tenants into this facility.
Sure, that's fair. Uh, what about the building? You said the first one targeted to be done by Q four, twenty-five. I would imagine all A's are dependent upon occupancies, so it's a very tough question to answer. But in maybe the best scenario, looking at even inside of the tenure window, when would, uh, an ideal goal for all of the lots?
You're exactly right, Commissioner. It is totally market dependent. We've got to obviously lease the first building before we go on to the next one and stuff. But ideally, I mean, it'd be great if we could just go from one building right into the next. And you can kind of see here, this one building was about a year, so it'd be great if we were building another one in twenty-six, and another one in twenty-seven, or maybe faster. Uh, I mean, right, and, uh, that's, that's what we would love to do. And I know Panatani is really wanting to, uh, bring some great high-quality tenants here to the city, and, uh, would love to build this park out just as fast as the market will allow us to do it.
I will add, Commissioner Combs, um, as part of the staff, look at the adjacent land uses in that. We took a look at the Ames aerials for about the last, I, I'll say about five years or so. And as you know, just from seeing it, there's been significant growth in this type of use in this southern Olathe area, all the way down. Um, and it's kind of amazing how quick the market has put buildings into place over the last five years here. So I think the city anticipates that that kind of pattern that you're witnessing out there today would continue. But again, it is very market-driven, right? There's, on, on this one, there's also, you know, the competition between the Commerce Center, the airport, South Olathe, this area, is all gonna be competing for different users at that point in time.
Yeah, they're certainly, uh, they're, they're surrounded. So, uh, a quick question about the construction jobs. Uh, I, I saw in, of course, the, I'm getting to traffic. That's where I'm going. Nothing more. I saw in the, uh, the meeting minutes or agenda packet from the twenty-first, that, uh, this twelve-hundred-plus construction jobs that are gonna be brought inside the first year. Would it be fair to say that, assuming buildings are going in every year, that that one-thousand-plus construction jobs or new jobs to the area is, is a fair, uh, safe assumption? And we're making, that's all we're making anywhere.
I can't really answer that one. I'm gonna pass to.
Well, I tell you what, let me, let me give you the point to the question, because the number, it matters. But ultimately, I'm talking about, uh, any of the traffic that's gonna be created by the new jobs, and of course, uh, any of the tenant traffic. And I know, uh, we have, um, I, I forget the date, but we passed an ordinance to do some construction there. Up at two, I believe, Claire Road, if I'm not mistaken. But could we, could you talk a little bit about the responsibility of that stretch of roads? And ultimately, any, any traffic concerns that may or may not come out of it?
Sure.
I'm gonna interject for a second just to help with this, because there's actually several phases to consider here. There's the construction stage traffic, then there's kind of the during build, right? As they increase with each phase of the project. And then also, there's the element of coordination, coordinating with the development to the south, which is Claire Crossing, which is also approved here. There's a variety of things that are gonna happen along these adjacent roads. So like during construction, um, as part of the public improvement permits and as part of the, um, design criteria that the city has, the applicant or those in the construction side will have to make certain safety improvements that were coming out of the traffic study anyway. So they're gonna have to do some of those improvements adjacent to the existing road or as part of the existing road. But then there'll also be construction entrances and different things that may not look permanent initially, because they're really designed to keep things like mud and other things and debris from getting out onto the road. So you might see the gravel type, um, and I, when I say gravel, it's the large A V three elements there to help knock the mud and dirt out of tires before they get on the road, stuff like that. So during construction, there, they will have to accommodate for that workforce, obviously, to park off the roadways. They won't be able to be on the streets themselves. And also, they'll have to have entryways and things like that that meet those construction guideline standards that Public Works has for that phase of the development. So in case I, they may have a, an answer, more of the overall view, I just wanted to give you the technical background of what the city's gonna be requiring.
That's fair. I appreciate it. And so is it probably fair to say that the, the thousand plus, I mean, to your point, it's gonna be in phases, not like a thousand plus people?
That would be.
Are, are coming into the construction side all within the same period of time?
I think that's probably meant more as kind of an overall from start to finish. You know, you've got, obviously, sheet rockers that are working on the building, but they're not there when we're pouring foundations. You know, things like that, so I think that's kind of meant to be kind of accumulative over the entire construction of the project. But Dave's absolutely right. Um, you know, day one, when we show up, you know, the, the excavators are gonna be there, and they're gonna pull in and, and unload their scrapers and backhoes and things like that and start working. And, um, I would imagine that, you know, we'll have site access probably off of Claire Road, at least initially, and do a construction entrance on that west side to come into the site. Claire Road's fairly low in traffic volume at that location, being out there a lot. I, just kind of makes a lot of sense to have your construction entrance there. And then, you know, then traffic can come out and to and from one hundred seventy-fifth street. At some point, we're gonna be constructing, um, the private drive A, which is the north-south road on the east side. Um, and once that gets put in, then we've got another access point there to access the eastern side of the site, as well as other areas of the property that need to be accessed at that point. And we can put in the permanent drive on, on Claire. So there's kind of a staging that will happen, uh, with the construction improvements, so that at always, that we always have some type of construction access, uh, that's available, that's, um, authorized by the city as part of the construction permits, um, to be able to safely access the site, get workers in, get workers out. And then obviously, we have to have the public improvements completed and open to, uh, traffic and accepted by the city before we can get our certificate of occupancy and start bringing, you know, tenant people in, and their customers and their employees and such, so.
Certainly.
Does that help answer your question?
It, it does. Maybe, uh, I, I could, I, I think I have more questions than I probably can get answered, but. But, uh, I'll, I'll close with what responsibility does the city have as it relates to the, the transportation, maybe the city and the county? With, of course, I'm talking post-construction.
Yeah.
With things that are obviously, when they're done and active.
So, there's a couple of things that are gonna go on through this project. Um, the, and I'm gonna kind of start with the city and county portion of this. The city is already beginning to look with the state at the interchange at Hundred Seventy Fifth and I thirty five. This, this whole stretch from there to the eastern city limits, which are now the eastern boundary of this property, as we look at that, that whole stretch of Hundred Seventy Fifth Street is getting evaluated. Um, and so Public Works is already looking at what that may be as an ultimate configuration. The current county carnit plan, which is their driver for arterials, shows Hundred Seventy Fifth ultimately as potentially a six lane arterial at that point. And I think Claire is shown as a four lane in that carnit plan. Um, initially, each developer along this stretch will have responsibilities and obligations regarding the peripheral road improvements. We in our code have a requirement that the developers that are adjacent to these arterials contribute to that peripheral road cost to improve the road. They have to make their safety improvements, obviously, to accommodate the development. So, things like the turn lanes that, um, Mr. Clausen's talking about, as well as some other elements, the signalization and things. Those will all have to be done as part of those safety improvements driven by the sa- traffic study. But in addition to that, there is that per- peripheral road cost, which goes from the center line to that half of the road that is adjacent to that development. So, Claire Crossing has the same situation to the south, right? So, they are, they are obligated to make contributions in escrow either to that or to build that road to a certain approved standard. In this particular case, there's not a traffic, enough traffic driven. I, I wanna take this back. In this particular case, you have actually three contributors to traffic. You'll have city oriented traffic that are citizens that either may live in the area or come to work in that area. So, there will be a public element to phasing or to phasing and also the cost payment of this. But then each developer is contributing kind of based on their development impact and what their traffic studies are showing and what we believe is fair. But the third component to this thing that's difficult to assess is Hundred Seventy Fifth Street traffic. If you look at it, it's coming from Missouri, Orland Park, you know, all the corridor of Olathe. It's cutting through here. Those cities will likely not contribute. We will probably, as a city, be looking for funding from the county and some other things. We have to make arguments to get that. So, there will be a couple, a public component taking it to six lanes probably at some point in time. This development in and of itself, as well as Claire Crossing, does not drive that six lane solution. Now, they do have some obligations at the intersections because of turn movements and the need for additional pieces to that, as well as some of the signalization that's being triggered by those two developments. But not all the traffic on Hundred Seventy Fifth Street can be attributed to just this development or to the development of Claire Crossing or the properties to the east associated with Rada. So, we try to figure out the proportionality of that and.
Yeah.
Help to get to a formula that basically says, this is your contribution. So, Public Works had figured out a cost that they're working on with each of these developers to say, here are the assumptions, this is the costs we believe are your contributions to that. And then that's generally gonna be put into an escrow or dedicated to these specific segments of roadway improvements as they're able to be made.
So, since these properties.
And I'm sorry for the long explanation.
No, no, this is really good.
We don't, we don't encounter this very often at planning commissions. This is a little unusual.
I'll, 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 I'll wrap up quickly. Uh, since these are adjacent properties, is there, again, just looking back at responsibility in the future of traffic and who is, is gonna be part of it? The city of Olathe and us, would there be any sort of, uh, I mean, there's Coca-Cola developments, there's obviously FedEx and other developments that are, I mean, a thousand yards away that are increasing the traffic. So, when you look at Hundred Seventy Fifth, in general, I guess my question, we're talking about a ten year plan, is the city of Olathe or is it just Johnson County and us that are?
It would probably involve all, all of those jurisdictions. Because once the Hundred Seventy Fifth Street, if Olathe continues to annex and they're on both sides of Hundred Seventy Fifth Street, generally the county drops out of responsibilities for maintenance and for.
Right.
But through the carnit plan, we can apply for funds from the county and the cars. It actually becomes the cars program at that point in time. Carnip is the guiding plan document. But the cars program, as well as mark funding potentially in this scenario, so it could go as a joint project with multiple jurisdictions. It really comes down to what length of improvements, how far does that project take us? We have started that discussion with the state, obviously, at the interchange because of the development interest that's been going on here. We have control of Hundred Seventy Fifth Street from the interchange to this boundary, basically. Although there's still a piece of this that's also, um, where epic landscape is, that's still in county. So, that's still an unannexed area. And then you have Olathe to the further east of that property. Um, I think the issue will be if this is approached as one large project, Hundred Seventy Fifth Street corridor from the interchange to, I'll, I'll say one sixty nine, right, highway. That may change the way we approach funding and what the roles of each jurisdiction is and how this goes about. It could be that because of the development pressure at this intersection between the interstate and here that you may see the city say, well, we know we need to make these improvements because we've got citizens in Rada and Treadway. Now, we've got development interests with the commercial development, that we need to bring our portion of it in line, so we may have to bring segments of it in at a time. Um, I think the city's goal in the whole process has been to try to find a way to do as much as possible as early as possible so that we're not dragging this out for ten, fifteen, twenty years in projects like you've seen in other places, right? Where, well, it's this half mile and then all of a sudden it's the next half mile and so on and so forth. So, we've been trying to work on ways to get either multi-jurisdictional cooperation or some kind of supplemental grants through economic development funds at the state or whatever we can to help with getting this pushed along as quickly as we can.
I mean, we've seen it's really easy for the developer to say, that's not my problem.
Yeah.
And then it ultimately is the community's problem. So, uh, thank, thank you. This is my last question. The, the funding that's proposed for, for this, the ten year project, is that from the date? Assuming there would be an approval, is it from that date to ten years? Or is it by individual building project? Is this all one big project? I'm talking about the IRB that's up for discussion. No, I'm, no, I'm. So, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to ask as it relates to the building of each one of these eight buildings.
Okay. So, this is coming to you as one whole rezoning for all this land.
Okay.
One, but they're gonna come back and do preliminary plans basically for each of the phases? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Is that right? So, every, when you broke it down into buildings earlier, you're gonna have a new meeting for each time they go through.
Got it.
That preliminary final plan and the landing plan and all of that, so. Probably get tired of this at some point.
No, not at all.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a final plan for each of this. This is one preliminary plan tonight for the whole area.
Sure. All right. I, I have no further questions.
Oh, okay. I had a few questions, but they were basically covered by Commissioners, uh, where it comes. The only one that I have left is about transparency. I know it's being reduced from fifteen to five. I just wondering what was the purpose of the change? Are you guys trying to say, try to, you know, meet, uh, energy efficiency? Or is that for materials, well, privacy? What was the reason?
Some of it is in energy efficiency and the other, the other part of it is privacy. I mean, a lot of these big warehouse users, they don't want a, they don't want an awful lot of glass. They like glass at the office areas where the people are mostly sitting and working. But in the warehouse area, typically, they don't like it and, and a lot of, and sometimes they even have us cover it up because it's a security risk for them. I mean, it's a security thing. Yeah. So.
I just wanna add that I think from an economic perspective, I think it's great that such a, a, a large developer is coming to, to Gardner. I mean, taking advantage of the inner motories, you know, five minutes from here. So, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, um, Chair. I've got several, several questions. Okay, um, so my first question, um, I think we had a new piece of something on our, uh, desk this evening?
Yeah.
Landscape plan. What was different, um, in this one lane on the, that stamp, January twenty seventh compared to what's in here?
So, there's, this is a little bit confusing, but I'll do my best. So, the preliminary plan package and the final plan package came in as two separate applications initially. The preliminary plan package, the landscape sheet in the preliminary plan, that one is the landscape plan that's being proposed for the overall development, okay? When the final plan came in, it was noticed and didn't get caught until today. So, it was noticed that the sheet that's the landscape in your final plan had not been updated and adjusted to match the preliminary plan. So, that one sheet is just a replacement for it. The biggest change, I think, and Judd, you may be able to, to respond to this too, the biggest change is that that sheet aligns with the preliminary plan, which met the comments that staff had provided, proposed to their initial submittal that they gave us. The initial submittal had more deciduous trees to it and we wanted more of that landscape screening because of the dock doors facing Hundred Seventy Fifth. So, what you, you'll see or notice the most about the changes is the fact that there's less deciduous and they beefed up the, um, actual screening with some of the evergreen trees and things like that.
Yeah, that, that's a fair statement, Dave. Uh, it just basically, it was a different design, uh, meant for a, a different city. Um, and we needed to have the plan updated and it was included by error. Uh, and so we needed the plan updated to match the preliminary plan that is in your packet that is correct. So, we didn't want to get out of sync on the landscaping.
So, that's why staff felt we could give you that sheet because if you looked at the preliminary plan, that, it, this aligns with that. So, you're, you're seeing both sheets, they're both the same.
These two sheets?
Let me see which ones.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it has the same stamp and the same date, landscape architect, both in the sixteenth, but these counts are different. So, it looks like it's less. We're going from more to less.
This one aligns with your preliminary plan on here.
Because there's now, there's less than what there was originally.
There are less deciduous trees and things like that, Gus, but they beefed up the.
I did, I just did a quick look. I didn't have a chance because it's like, we got an extra one here. We went down by, I don't know, twelve.
Yeah, those are deciduous trees.
Same, same. Went down by one, same, same. Went down by twenty seven? I don't know, quick math, I'm not good at math. Went down by two, went down by seven, same.
Yeah.
Went up by one. So, we have one that went up.
Right. So, this.
Is the current where we have less trees.
So, what I'll say is, the deciduous trees definitely were what were used.
Well, everything was except for the last one or in the top.
This aligns with your preliminary, this sheet should be tossed.
But, but why did we go down?
That was a previous requirement from a different.
Saying that they needed more trees?
Yeah. So, what we, right, under their code.
So, when it was looked at by the city of Olathe, under their code, they had different requirements than what we have.
More trees, more, more screening.
But we also had made comments initially on the initial submittal that brought them up to our standards.
That's correct. Initial submittal, we had.
Minimum of gardener standard.
That, that new sheet, yes, yes.
Minimum, or minimum.
Yeah, those meet the gardener standards and we just wanted to make sure our final plan for Lot One.
I'm, I'm sorry, speak up a little bit.
We just wanted to make sure our final plan for Lot One matched the, the preliminary plan so that we weren't out of sync on it. So, that's all we were doing is making sure that our final plan matches the preliminary.
Yeah.
So, I was, I was comparing it to what was in the site plan.
And that's the final plan sheets there. So, that's why it changes on the final.
But it's a site plan, it's not a final development plan.
It's part of, it's part of their final development plan.
But it says site plan on here.
Yeah, that's what the sheet will say.
So, the development plan includes architectural elevations and site plan and grading plan and a lot of other plan sheets as well.
I guess I'm just typically used to seeing it as, you know, literal final development plan called out. And all I have is a final plat. Okay. This is my overall site plan. And then here's my preliminary plat. Okay?
That goes with this.
But this is still in the city of Olathe.
That.
Dated September twenty sixth.
That'll be corrected.
What's gonna, I mean, why didn't it come with the date?
So, where's the final plan?
Final plat, so my final plat's right here. And this one does say the city of Gardner. Yeah. So, that one is the story.
So, that goes, this is the final one.
Right.
Preliminary plat, preliminary development plan, like that. So, this then should be. This is the kind of sheet.
Okay.
So, that sheet is.
Very good, that one.
This is, this is tossed. This goes in.
What, what do you not have? You say that we have some of the trees beefed up, but by the counts, all of them.
So, because it's a different city requirement, but for our requirements, they had to make some adjustments to meet our standards.
To meet them.
Yeah.
But we can always, you know, make a recognition for. Or, you know, that's.
So, this should be accurate because this is what's going to go if it's per.
This, right. This is the only thing final for this meeting.
Well, no, this is final and this is final.
The red in the site means final. Lots of different things, Dave. Thanks for getting down to, I am, thank you for working with me, Dave.
You know, I always have questions.
Okay, okay. All right, okay. That helps clarify that. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, um, and then I had another question about traffic study. Um, I read the, uh, the minutes from the city of Olathe Planning Commission meeting and, um, they approved the, the rezone and, um, preliminary development plan. And one of the conversation topics was traffic. And I saw in our motion, um, or suggested motion, right? Um, that, that the construction, it's within here, um, location, proposed traffic, including but not limited to a whole list of things.
Right.
So, it's, it's only being reviewed by Public Works?
So, Public Works is.
Are they?
Yeah. So, Public Works is responsible for any of the public improvements in the arterial right of ways and things like that. So, they're the department and agency that has the responsibility for reviewing all public improvement plans. And that includes drive approaches that may be within the right of way, that includes turn lanes, that includes any kinds of enhancements to that roadway. So, their staff handles what's called the public improvement permit section of this. The language that they have asked, that we put in there is very similar to the stormwater language, which is above that. There's a condition in there. They're starting to standardize their comments so that everybody understands that just because you see this in this concept form and these development plans, when they start applying the technical specs, there may be some changes that occur. So, you might see drive entrances that are not exactly what this drive entrance looks like from a width standpoint or from a, a curb radius standpoint. So, they've started kind of putting those out there so that the engineers and the designers know that they have to go to the technical specs to make sure they're meeting those requirements within the right of way. So, this, this plan will require, actually, I believe it requires quite a significant area of right of way, I think, that's being asked for on Hundred Seventy Fifth Street. And so, part of the concerns are you're gonna have extended drives in there for a while, right? That are not part of the roadway system, but they're in the right of way. So, they have to be designed and located correctly in order to work. As, as kind of that, I'm gonna call it an interim kind of drive because what'll happen is, under the public projects later where lanes. because what'll happen is, under the public projects later, where lanes may be added, that drive will shorten, that throttle will shorten to the drive entrance, because you're adding more lanes to the roadway, so. So, that's why that language is, is being recommended within there. It's, it's gonna probably become, on projects of this scale, on arterials, you're gonna probably see that same kind of standard language. Because there have been times, I will say this, I've worked in other jurisdictions, where somebody has taken the site plan and they'll come back and go, well, we don't need to do anything to change it, this is what got approved. Well, there are a whole bunch of construction specs that the Public Works people have on stormwater, traffic, those kinds of improvements, that they will enforce during that public improvement section. Or that public improvement permit process, sorry.
Just hoping, you know, this is a very, very large-scale item that we've never seen, at least I can recall from...
Not, not at the City of Gardner.
Never. And so, I just feel that due diligence really needs to be done. And traffic on one hundred seventy-fifth right now is already terrible. It's terrible. So, I can't imagine a development of this size going in without extreme due diligence done on one hundred seventy-fifth.
Yeah.
That road is a nightmare.
This is, this is going to be, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand it, because for us, as planners and the planning commission, our concern is not just right here with this one development right now. It's really from, I'll even say from Cedar Niles, which is where you go into the McDonald's or the Walmart entry there. So, from that Cedar Niles area, all the way to this eastern portion, we are going to see a lot of development interest in the coming years here. And I'm, and I'm not talking decades, we're, we're seeing the inquiries, we're seeing the interest. And therefore, you're absolutely right, the coordination level of this is gonna be really, really important. And I think that's another reason why Public Works is saying they're going, I wanna get some of these standard statements into these planning approvals, so that there's no surprises when these folks come in for their applications and all the specific construction drawings start coming in, and they've gotta meet those standards. So, they should be designing to those things.
I'm just a little surprised that something of this size, planning commission didn't see a traffic study or anything relative to that.
No, traffic study was submitted as part of this, and it was considered by Public Works.
So, there is something, I, I did some digging on the Olathe, City of Olathe...
No, yeah, it's not in your packet.
So...
But typically what happens, stormwater reports and traffic studies are reviewed by the technical staff at Public Works to ensure that they're meeting the requirements to allow you to see that, so.
Okay, so we will see them.
You will probably see traffic memos and things like that with later phases of this. There is a traffic study already here for the overall development. The preliminary traffic study has been done. It's been reviewed by Public Works and they found it acceptable for meeting all the requirements. That's what's driving things like the right-turn lanes and the traffic signalization and everything like that. That's all coming from a very large technical document that, quite frankly, even for planners, I look at some of it and I have to rely on a traffic engineer to tell me, okay, this is what they're actually suggesting.
So, the, the basis is being used as what was built as the foundation when this was already seen at a different...
Correct, correct. So, it's unusual for us to necessarily bring you the whole traffic study, because they're hun, they can be hundreds of pages long. And a lot of it is very technical. And if we, we have at some points allowed, like the engineer for the developer might explain or answer those kinds of questions. Or, I think we've had past instances, Judd's been involved with these, where we've had the traffic engineer that did the study come in and talk to you on those things.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this, this project is a large project, there's no doubt about it, it's larger than most. I will tell you, the, the technical foundational side with the stormwater, as well as the traffic, is getting a lot of scrutiny.
Okay.
I mean, it's, the hard part right now is we're all trying, I think, to figure out, okay, how does this all come together, given all the development interest that could happen with some of the commercial activities and things that we're, we're anticipating.
Lots of, lots of moving parts.
Lot of moving parts.
Absolutely. Um, one other, just a comment, on the, on the rezoning, I had noticed, again, I read the planning commission notes. There were stipulations put in as far as like, no poultry packaging, no bus barn, no, there were like certain uses, and it sounded like there was agreeance to that from Olathe, again, it's a different municipality, but keeping us within guardrails of what do we really want, you know, the City of Gardner to see from I thirty-five, you know, you wanna meat packing plant? I mean, teach their own, but this is, you're never gonna get bare land back, okay? You just, you can't, unless you demo the building and start over, but... And, and two, that, to my, I didn't do my homework thoroughly and recall what, what restricted uses are within Gardner's MP two. So, that might already be covered and it's moot point.
So, I'm gonna give you kind of a two-part answer.
Okay, thanks.
One, one part with Olathe, Olathe's code's very different for the zoning category that was being asked for, so there may have been uses in there that are listed, that we do not have listed in the MP two. The other part of it is, is part of this development plan, as you know, when we go to these planned districts, this is gonna be the regulatory plan. So, if something is proposed, let's say of a spec, let's say they get somebody who is interested in doing a use like that, but it changes the building footprint significantly, or it changes the function around it significantly, they're gonna have to come back through for planning commission at that point. So, every one of these final phase items, so phase one, we kind of know will be this one building in this format, which is gonna limit certain uses automatically. So, we're not to worry about it, but each of those next phases, as they bring final plans together and hopefully have somebody, or they're looking to serve some particular use, we will have the opportunity to evaluate that and possibly put a limitation that it's for that use, or it's for those uses at that point in time. So, we'll, we'll see those at different phases. I think it's, it's fair to also say that this has been an issue of discussion that we've had with the applicant regarding what we believe are appropriate uses and not appropriate uses here.
Sure, okay. One more super quick note. It, I thought I saw in the phasing plan that for the, what we'd be seeing final tonight, were there additional tracks associated with a final for tonight?
Yeah, so, and I think the applicant mentioned this, I think Bob mentioned this too. So, there's three other tracks. And so, when you, if you pull that final plat sheet that's real elongated, the three tracks are the roadway, what would be the private roadway track, okay? So, that'll be a private road that kind of goes on the east side of this phase one lot one, curves up and around. The two lots at the top of that are, or tracks at the top of that are for stormwater detention purposes. So, we at the city require that those be dedicated at this point in time, so that they can do the design work, because this lot's gonna ultimately drain to those facilities. Plus, as the applicant mentioned, there'll be a number of other lots at a later stage that'll also drain into this. But, by dedicating these tracks, now we can have access to those if there's something that comes up after it's put in place. So, let's say that, I hate to say this, but I will say it. Let's say this is the only building that's built, okay? And nothing ever happens, which I would hope doesn't, and I know the applicant hopes this doesn't happen. But, if it does, these dedicated tracks allow us then to monitor that stormwater system and make sure it's functioning correctly, gives us the ability to enforce upon that lot owner the improvements or the maintenance elements that they would have to do to keep that going. So, hopefully that makes sense.
Perfect, yeah, that makes so much sense. I think I'm good on questions. Thank you guys for standing up and entertaining questions. I know it's long ones, so thank you.
No problem, thank you. I don't have any questions.
I just had a couple of questions. One, just kind of like related to the, the private street. What was the kind, is the reasoning behind that, basically, we don't wanna have a public street connecting over to Olathe's like one hundred seventy-first street? What's the reason for that?
So, I think there's a couple of things going on, and I'll, the applicant can clarify these. But, I, I will say, the city, because this does not, this roadway as proposed would not connect to any other public street, the city did not want to accept maintenance responsibility for that roadway and the costs that are associated with it. We felt the private development should deal with those costs in that situation. I will say that, as the development pattern seems to be unfolding in Olathe, there is likely not going to be a roadway to connect to, at least at this point. I think at one time, they were talking about it. Judd, I don't know if you wanna expand a little bit on that or not.
No, that's correct. At one point in time, there was gonna be a road on that half-mile line between this project and the, the existing building to the east and the Coca-Cola project. It doesn't look like that road will ever come to fruition. So, this road just kind of comes back into the northeast part of the development and just sort of terminates at the last buildings there. So, made sense for it to really just be a private drive at this point that's maintained by the association, where everybody chips in and pays for their road and stuff. So, lessens the tax burden on Gardner taxpayers.
Yeah, it's less snowplow maintenance, we don't have to worry about heavy haul destruction of the roadway, you know, that all...
We don't need to build a shortcut for somebody else. Yeah. I guess, just a note, like for the, you know, I know the, with the one hundred seventy-fifth and I thirty-five area plan, it talked about being a regional commercial area. I just appreciate the staff's explanation and report, just kind of going through the reasons. I guess for real quick, could you kind of give like broad strokes? Like, 'cause I think the regional commercial said M one was an appropriate, would fit under that category, but M two technically does not. Can you different, can you give me just high-level difference between the M one and M two?
So, some of it's, some of it is looking at it from the perspective at the time, unfortunately, the way the sub-area plan was done, they used kind of different, what I'll call different terminology, right? They didn't, they didn't exactly say, okay, this is this. They kind of just said, well, it's, this is what it's similar to, or this is what we think it is. When we looked at this scenario, we did take into account that that was kind of, I would say, maybe more equivalent to the M one zoning, but then we started looking at what's going on with Olathe as well. And, and that being that close, that adjacency and what's happening there, we felt that we could go to the M two district with this as a staff recommendation at least, to say this is kind of in the character of what you're gonna see right next to this. So, again, the uses themselves will probably, as this unfolds, we will see what's approvable and what isn't meeting those things, but...
Is it like a general like size, like square footage of the individual buildings maybe, like?
No, because these are still individual, so these are still individual buildings that would fall under, I believe, our general industrial building type.
Yeah.
So, I just need to check that I'm using the right term there. So, the general industrial building type, all of these seem to fit under that category, and that's where their, that's where their architectural will be evaluated, is with that.
Okay. I say, thank you for addressing kind of Evergy concerns. I know we had a development to the south. And just dealing with the power line, wanna make sure those, those...
It was really kind of interesting, because when that development to the south was going through the city process last year, or so, maybe about a year ago, I can't remember exactly. But, we were coordinating with Evergy on our part, while we were in Olathe as well, because Evergy was talking to both of us. So, really helped, you know, coordinate that.
And, and I, I will tell you that as they get into construction and improvements, they will have to provide letters of approval from both Southern Star and Evergy, quite frankly. Sometimes, I would say the Southern Star easement there, the gas easement, they are very stringent about crossing and design criteria and all kinds of uses in proximity to those pipelines. So, that will be a requirement as part of those permit approvals, to make sure that all of that's on file. And it'll be the same with Evergy, because they'll be protecting an easement. That's, that's a pretty large transmission area, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess just kind of the final comment, I'll, I guess I'll say is like, I know there's a lot of, a lot of discussion out here, maybe things that aren't pertinent to the planning commission, but I, I don't see any, any reason why we can't approve the rezoning and the preliminary plans and the final plans. From the discussion, things that aren't here. I guess, there, there's more discussion, we can continue that.
I might, I might have, Jesse, do you wanna put up the recommended motions, just to see, so that people can understand? See that, 'cause I don't know that those have been up yet. So, as you can see, oops, for the rezoning preliminary development plan and preliminary plat, we have a motion with several conditions. Commissioner Mater was referring to a couple of those in regard to the construction elements there. Again, don't be shocked, on these kinds of large projects, we are gonna probably see more of this kind of standardized language as part of conditions, just to make sure everybody understands that when they're coming to public improvement permit time, everything's gonna meet those tech specs, or at least be meeting the requirements that Public Works has at those points in time, so that's why that's there. I believe the other condition Bob mentioned was the airport commission and county board approval, which is pretty standard here. And then, at this point, it would be approval of the requested deviations per the staff comments and report. So, this is also one of those, that if you're inclined to utilize this motion, you do not have to read the whole motion, the whole motion, you can cite the, the conditions.
And, and just another thing for clarification, since the second motion, or this, yeah, the, yeah, the second part of this would be contingent on the first part, would have to be...
Absolutely. So, we, we do run final plans simultaneous like this, we, we've done it for other projects. The final plan, though, does not go to city council. So, what you would have tonight is, through the preliminary plan, if you were to adopt the motion, the suggested motion, that goes to this governing body then for their decision-making. The final plan, what we do here is, there's a condition that should be on there, that you have to get that approval. It's the first condition that's listed there. So, even if you approve this final plan tonight, if they do not get approval at the governing body for the preliminary plan, it does not matter that this has been approved by you, because we do not have an actual approved preliminary plan at that point. That's why that condition is in there. Does that make sense? We're good?
Yep.
So, we would need two separate motions, and we would need to take action on the preliminary first. Sure, if there's other questions or...
Chair, Chair, I can make that motion. After review of application two four dash three zero four dash zero seven, rezoning and associated preliminary development plan and preliminary plat for Inomodil Industrial Park, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the request to rezone one hundred eighty-six point two-one acres from R U R County Rural Residential District to MP two Planned General Industrial District with the associated preliminary development plan and preliminary plat, subject to the following four conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion made by Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner Sosa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries five to one.
Sure, that was Commissioner Holmes? Yes, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Since that motion carried, we can go to the final, the vote on plan, the final plat motion.
I'll make that motion. After review of application two four dash three zero four dash one zero, final development plan and associated final plat for Inomodil Industrial Park and staff report dated January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission approves the applications and proposed... Proposed, as proposed, sorry. As proposed, and recommends the governing body accept the dedication of right-of-way and easements provided the following conditions are met, items one through five in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner Sosa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries five to one. All right, I think that's the end of our regular agenda tonight. Staff, any, any discussion items?
Just very quickly, we will have a February meeting, so there will be a February planning commission meeting. I believe February, is it twenty-four? Let me double-check my schedule, yes, February 24th. Currently, we have one item on the agenda, it is for a phase one final plan associated with a previously approved Fairfield development, so, which you might recall, it's been a little while since that one's been before us, but that's an area that is adjacent to Edgerton, just south of Cherokee. Poplar is the road that comes down to that area there, so that's what you'll have before you at that planning commission in February. That's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, and the second by Commissioner Mater. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.